All right, well, folks are loading in, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I have seven P M. Uh, we have no changes to the agenda, correct? We have made to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, public comment. Do we have, I see one person in the crowd. Do we have any, any public comment to be made?
No.
So consent agenda. Everybody get a chance to read through everything from last time?
Oh, Mayor, before we go into consent agenda, could we do visitors?
Uh, oh.
We have, we, we have with us Bill Still, which I sent an email to the council.
Sorry, it's one thirty in the morning for me or two o'clock in the morning for me here, so.
I thought it'd be a great time to do an introduction with Bill at the beginning, so he doesn't have to stay around if he doesn't want to, but uh,
yeah.
is our candidate for an interim police chief. Uh, in, in fact, uh, he starts on Wednesday of this week. And he retired from his current job on Friday, so he's anxious to jump right back into the, the working group. Uh, Bill's experience and resume is phenomenal. And so we're very fortunate to have Bill, but I just wanted him to come tonight and introduce himself to the council and see if you guys had any questions uh, for him, but I think um, he's gonna really help uh, position ourself for the next uh, permanent chief's uh, candidates.
Yeah, Bill, would you mind just giving us the, the quick rundown on your, your background, your thoughts, all that kind of stuff?
I'm mute.
No, we got no volume for Bill.
And I can't hear you right now, Bill, let's uh, see if we can fix this.
Do you want to try say something, Bill?
Still nothing.
Still nothing, okay, well then, let's go ahead and move on through the agenda, and if Bill gets that out, audio fixed, then we'll have him chime, chime in at that point.
Absolutely, so uh, see, we did consent agenda. Let's talk, let's talk about consent agenda, everybody, everybody read through the minutes and all that, any questions, comments, concerns, any issues? We have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second it.
Well, by rook call.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger? Motion passes.
All right, we've got a couple of public hearings, uh, we have the state revenue sharing hearing, so I will go ahead and open that. I have seven oh five. So Josh, give us, give us the details, my friend.
Well, I'll, I'll take the details, uh, Josh, Josh is, Josh is here for uh, technical support, but um,
Moral support?
He, he's the numbers guru, uh, so this is, uh, this is just our public hearing, uh, that we are required by law to have uh, regarding what we do with our state revenue share. Uh, and certifying the services that we provide so that we're able to qualify for whatever revenue share that we qualify for in those services that we offer. Um, as council knows, uh, our state revenue shares about, this year it's about sixty one thousand dollars is our estimate. Uh, we've set a policy many years ago, we continue it, or this council has continued it. Uh, that we really just dedicate that revenue share dollars to supporting our parks and our park system throughout the city. We've got a fairly robust park system compared with a lot of other cities. And that's where we dedicate the money to, um, if there's other ideas, we're here to hear what they may be. And I think that's it, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Cool. Uh, so, do we have anybody in the public who wishes to comment about it? I'm gonna take that as a no, uh, so, do we need to discuss any other possible uses? It always, always goes to the parks, it seems.
I feel like I have a forest growing in my backyard right now with all this rain, so the city wants to take care of that.
They need to take care of their, too.
Yeah, and the mayor's.
It's like in the nineties here.
I think Josh will go around with the lawnmower, right? He'll hit everybody's yards, okay, great.
All right, well, if there's uh, if there's nothing to be discussed, we will close the public hearing portion, I have seven oh seven. We've got resolution six twenty-two and seven twenty-two that we need to vote on, so do we have a motion for six twenty-two?
I move to approve resolution six twenty-two, certifying multiple services.
Seconded.
Well, by rook call.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving on to seven twenty-two, which is the resolution declaring cities' election to receive state revenues. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution seven twenty-two certifying municipal services.
Seconded.
No, that's the wrong, wrong.
Uh, actually, it would be, there was an amendment, do you have that one?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I had it off to the side. I move to approve resolution seven twenty-two declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second. Well, by rook call.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Wick?
Aye.
And Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
And motion passes.
All right, moving on to the second public hearing, we have the budget hearing for fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. Go ahead and open that up, I have seven oh nine. So Ron, your info, please.
Well, I really don't have much of a staff report, but as council knows, uh, the, you have copy of the budget. Uh, it's been made available to the public at City Hall, it's been made available on our city website. Uh, our total uh, budget this year is a little over eighteen million dollars. Uh, of course, that looks elevated because uh, we have to budget to expend all of our capital projects. Probably will not occur uh, in this budget cycle, um, however, the budget is doing well. We had a budget committee uh, uh, hearing and meeting, uh, and there were really no surprises. We continue to operate on a very consistent budget, year after year with uh, you know, inflationary increases for expenditures here and there, uh, and revenues, but otherwise, the budget has remained fairly consistent uh, the last several years. Uh, we also convened a public question and answer, uh, budget session that was led by staff, we, we did a Zoom and uh, in-person uh, meeting, it really, really wasn't that well-attended, um, as was the budget uh, committee meeting itself. Uh, not very well-attended, and you know, that's not uncommon. Um, but we certainly did quite a little bit of outreach on the budget, we also printed our um, budget highlights and our summary inside the newsletter. Um, so we've, I think we've done quite a little bit of outreach for the budget. Um, don't, I don't think there's any surprises, uh, I think uh, council is very conservative, a- as was the budget committee. Um, uh, policy board, and so if you have questions about anything specific in the budget, I think at this point, happy to entertain those.
I mean, I'm, I'm just shocked that the public didn't want to attend those meetings, budgeting, that's the, that's the fun sexy side of government, right? All right, so, do we have any, any comments at all, any public comment? Now, I will close the public hearing portion, I have seven twelve. Uh, council, do we need to chat about this at all? I feel like we kind of have it down to a science at this point. Well, in that case, we need to vote on resolution eight twenty-two, it's the resolution adopted twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget, making appropriations and opposing and categorizing taxes. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution eight twenty-two adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget, the amount of eighteen three hundred eighty-three, nine sixty-nine as presented, and to levy taxes at the permanent tax rate of three point six three two seven per one thousand of assessed value as presented.
I'll second.
Well, by rook call.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let's uh, let's check real quick, Bill, did, did turning it off and on again work?
I, how about this, does that work?
There we go.
Oh, yeah, went to, went to plan B and a second device, I, I clearly impressed you with my technical skills so far, so thanks for your patience, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, real quick, my name's Bill Steele, uh, yeah, like Ron said, I retired on Friday, I spent six years in Twolleton as their chief. Uh, twenty years prior to that with Washington County, started as a patrol deputy back in nineteen ninety-six and had a wonderful career there, left there in two thousand sixteen as the chief deputy to go to Twolleton. Uh, one of the kind of cool things that I got to do with Washington County back, I can't believe it's been ten years now, back in two thousand and twelve, got to go to the city of Forest Grove for about five months to be their interim chief while they were doing recruitment. And that's really what kind of excited me when I saw this potential opportunity. I had such a good time kind of popping into a new department for a little while and helping them out, helping them find a, a new chief and yeah, so my, my four-day retirement will, will come to an end on Wednesday and I'm ready to get back to work, so yeah, so I'm, I'm just excited.
Excellent, uh, I figure I should probably ask, will you be available on the, on the twenty-fifth to kind of float around and introduce yourself to community members?
Yeah, you bet.
Perfect, I will be there as well, so hopefully we'll get a chance to meet in person, um, I don't know if Ron told you, I'm out in Senegal right now.
No.
All right.
Can I ask a Bill a question? Bill's been through lots of budget hearings and council meetings, have you ever seen a council operate this efficient in approving their budget bill?
Well, you know, uh, it is fairly impressive, I'm sure there was a lot of hard work that went into it, but yeah, it is a, a challenge at times getting the community to, to get involved in these processes for sure, but you're clearly doing something right.
Excellent. So let's see, old business, we've got
Thank you, Bill.
Ron's evaluation. So we all went through a little process of, you know, doing the scores and everything, Angie, you were the one who did the report. Um, is there anything you want to discuss with council?
The only thing is that we definitely need a new evaluation form, and I never want to have to do it again, that was horrible. Um, no, Ron continues to be doing a wonderful job, um, within his role, the only area of improvement that we talked about was interpersonal communication. Um, and finding ways to, uh, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, uh, figuring out some internal stuff to get him some relief, to get our staff some relief.
Cool, uh, Ron, is there anything you wanted to discuss?
No, appreciate the evaluation from the council, I know that that's a box we have to check, and I do really uh, like to get the feedback because it's a barometer of, you know, if I need to adjust or make any changes, uh, and uh, you know, I've reached out to a couple of council members that have had individual comments that I want to explore, make sure that I'm addressing those. Uh, you know, different uh, comments mean something different to everybody, uh, uh, communication's a great example because how I communicate with one individual may be at a, a level for them that they're, that they want, but that may be opposite to another person, and I think just understanding that even though we're a body, a group as a whole, uh, that we still need to have a level of uh, some sort of communication channel that's more individualized, and I kind of started that pre-COVID, uh, but then, you know, that kind of got d- derailed with the whole COVID thing, but I think now that we're back in full swing, I'll start working on that again, and we'll keep doing good things here at the city. Uh, and then, uh, just to comment on communication, that, that's always been a priority of mine, um, and as you know, we've really uh, done a lot of different things to improve our communication, not just internally, but externally to the community. Through a lot of the different um, programs and outreach things that we've done, but as I'm hiring new staff that are coming in to assist me, we're really focused on that communication aspect, their ability to use and handle social media to its maximum efficiency uh, as well, as produce and, and distribute written literature, uh, and the physical communication, so we're really focused on that, we want to make sure we get the right people. Um, we've had some great candidates, um, and we're continuing to get good applications, so we'll continue to focus on that. It's been a struggle, uh, right now, the uh, hiring new people in this current environment is, it's a very unusual and unprecedented because, um, we've had people that we thought would be great applicants, wanted the job, um, and then either uh, found other jobs when we made, you know, those outreaches to offer the positions or within a short window. Um, or, um, or just decided maybe that wasn't the right fit for them, and we do a very interactive interview process, it's about four hours uh, at the city, and one of the reasons we do that is because we want candidates to know what the job is like, and so we put them in the chair and give them some of those assignments, and, and you'd be surprised how many people are like, well, it's not quite what I'm used to, um, you know, maybe that, maybe this isn't the right uh, position for me because city jobs are, you know, they're, we, we have to do a lot of work, it, it's not a passive job, it's, it's very labor-intensive, and the pressure can mount. You could have a meeting, or you have a project, or you have a deadline, and then, you know, all of a sudden, you're in this situation where it becomes critical that you complete your tasks, and not every job has that level of, of pressure and I, and, and so it's, it's difficult to find people that want to fit in those jobs, but um, anyway, we are working on that, where I think we're, we've got a great pool of applicants right now, we're working with, and we'll see how that goes, I'm glad we got Bill on board, um, he's gonna be a great fit, uh, uh, I keep telling him I, you know, I'm gonna try over the next three months to talk him into maybe a permanent position here, who knows? He may, he may like it so much that he may just decide that that's for him, I don't know.
All right, so uh, I guess as part of the evaluation too, we need to figure out who's gonna do next years. Um, let's see, because we're, we, we are in that election cycle, so we probably need a counselor who's on the, the other cycle, um. Doug, are you on the, on, on the off-cycle?
It's calling me out, aren't you?
I am calling.
Cycle?
He is.
Yeah.
Scott's not here, I say we nominate him.
Oh.
Oh.
No, he's online.
Well, he can't say anything.
He's here virtually.
Was he trying to raise his hand? He just got targeted, yeah, we could uh,
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about it, or if you're not opposed, or if Scott, you want to do it, I mean, if there's someone who wants to throw their name in the hat, by all means.
Oh, got quiet, all right, I'll take it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and uh, we'll, we'll plan on having, having Doug do it next. Uh, see, new business, we've got none, so Ron, your report, please.
Okay, I'll skip the police department and public works report because their report, because they're in your packet, I don't think there's anything um, unusual other than normal activity there. Um, in uh, my report, I'll just go through just a couple of things real quick, and then if council has questions, you're welcome to ask. G three grand opening, we facilitated that in the city, we've done a couple of business grand openings. Um, in the last, I don't know, two and a half years, two years, there's probably been either a dozen businesses in town that redeveloped or businesses that came in and sided in the city, and uh, so it's been great to see that transformation uh, of those businesses and to help facilitate their welcoming to the city, but it was a great event, uh, Triva put on a fantastic little feed. Uh, she had live music and free drinks, uh, and uh, you know, it was, it was great, county commissioners were there, um, and
Did I miss it?
Yep, uh, we had a couple of council members, uh, that were able to attend, it was a little early in the evening, so some people were working, but a couple that attended. Um, the main thing in my report, I wanted to check back with council, was you had tasked me, uh, we had a gentleman who wanted to put in some artificial turf uh, in his front yard, you'd tasked me with doing some research, and I, I had done that research, I checked with uh, probably six or eight other jurisdictions just in the area to find out what they had done. And a, a lot of them really, they don't really have a regulation on it. Um, they don't describe their landscaping as living, although they just assume that it's living, so they're somewhat silent. But there's no structured regulations on how it's installed or, um, that kind of stuff. Uh, and so, um, I talked to the city attorney about how to adjust the ordinance, it's, it's a very, it's some slight verbiage changes in the ordinance, so it's gonna be a very minor adjustment, but I, I did ask the city attorney, I said, if council wanted to approve this, is there a way to do it so we don't have to wait um, for a year? And he, he has given me some direction to be able to do that, not perfect, but he says if council intends to change the ordinance anyway, uh, there's probably a path forward, and that would be having him go to the planning commission with just a minor modification to his original uh, um, occupancy plan, which included landscaping. Now, he'd still have to meet the uh, formula for grass and plant shrub ratio that we have memorialized, but he could, in fact, uh, get approval at the next planning commission meeting, so then I went to the planning commission, who is your advisory uh, body on such matters, and talked to them about their feelings on it, they were a little lukewarm uh, about uh, what it would look like from an aesthetic standpoint and how it could really go off one way or the other, and um, and I think where we landed is they were good with it, if council wanted to do that, their comments were supportive of that, um, uh, simply that they would like to make sure that there is a permit process, so that if we're permitting it, that there's you know, some sort of criteria that they would have to meet, I think we'd just have to develop an internal policy that said, you know, you have to meet some sort of equality criteria, um, and so we could do that if council gave me direction tonight, that that's what they wanted to do by consensus. We wouldn't necessarily need a vote, I would have him submit that application and support it from a staff level. And then he could get his landscaping in
Yeah.
by next month.
I'm good with it. Yeah.
And then, like, like we talked about it, when it was an issue at cans, council, you know, when it's, when it's professionally installed and done the right way, I think that was, that was kind of the, 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 the key point that we were looking at, so I'm good with it.
Right, sounds like consensus of majority of you, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that with him. And then, uh, we'll, we'll still bring that code amendment forward as soon as we've got a, a number of other amendments, we don't want to just spend the money to do one amendment, it's a fairly lengthy process.
Right.
Uh, but if anybody else comes forward, that's the method we'll use with them as well. Uh, superhero carnival, it's turning out, we've got lots of interest, we've got a lot of family and kid-oriented uh, entities that are participating this year, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great event, I think we have somewhere between twelve and sixteen, eighteen booths, um, and more volunteers than we need, which is great, because usually it's the other way around. And I'm looking forward to just enjoying the event and kind of uh, interacting with everybody. Uh, so that's gonna be a great event, corn festival shaping up, Angie's been uh, helping us out with sponsors, it's, it's been something we really haven't been able to do a lot of. And so we're starting to do, we're starting to get a few more, I think we're gonna do okay. Uh, it may not be, last year, everybody was coming out of COVID, and everybody just wanted to throw money at the event, this year's a little different. But we're gonna do good, and it's gonna be a great event, we don't have to uh, expend as much for capital expenditures this year. Um, because we bought a lot of stuff last year, we have some, but um, it'll be a minor compared to last year, so I think we're gonna do great. And we've got a lot of volunteers uh, coming for that event, um, and some of them, a lot of them from out of town that just want to come and help, so I think that's gonna be a, a really good event, you'll hear more about that at our next event planning meeting, if you attend. Uh, Saturday market, again, starting to pick up, I think mods is generating a lot of interest, we're getting uh, many hits on our, our Facebook uh, and social media accounts daily uh, from vendors, I think, what are we up to on vendors, fourteen to twenty?
Right now, we have seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah, seventeen vendors, and that's pretty good for an every Saturday event, uh, we'd like to have between twenty and forty, that's our target. Um, I think we've got a couple of vendors inside mods, uh, we have some criteria because we want those to be anchor vendors. And they also have to make a commitment to be there every Saturday, um, so those are really the two criteria, and we would really like to get more produce-type vendors, so we're saving those spots um, for those vendors, so on our grand opening, it may not necessarily be full, but again, it's generating, it's doing what it's supposed to do. And I think once we do get a couple of anchor commitments in there from some local growers, that that's really gonna take off. Uh, we'll do a ribbon cutting at eleven A M., uh, and then superhero will start at twelve, so we'll be right over uh, for that event, uh, and Saturday market starts at nine. Um, and then the final thing that I just want to touch on council, and it kind of ask your, uh, make sure that I'm at the right level with you, is we've got a few upgrades to the complex here, we've got the sign going in, if you've noticed, we've taken out that landscaping, because it was obstructing. Um, you know, just everything that was there, the bus stop, we're gonna put in new landscaping. Um, and one of the elements that is in the original plans was to put brick on the front of this building, and then new windows, and that's supposed to help cut down on the sound. Uh, we budgeted that money in this year's budget uh, to do that, uh, and then there's an, um, not an overlay, but a restriping and I think an oil seal on this parking lot. Um, uh, and then there's a gas line that needs to be moved, so those are all the things in our plans to do, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, it doesn't have to come to council because it's under the threshold, I can just sign off on it, but do, if you wanted that contract to come to council, I'm certainly happy to bring it to you if you think that's needed. Um, and all of that is really just the whole, what we're trying to do to spruce up the front and to make the sign more visible and the front of the building more attractive, and to cut down on sound, which has been a problem.
I think it's pretty uh, minor, you can go ahead and, I'm fine with you moving forward with it.
I think unless there's some ridiculous change order that you need another fifteen grand or something, you know?
Yeah.
And, and if necessary for us to get the job done, then obviously that situation, but I mean, I think it's well within your umbrella to complete for us.
Excellent, well, if that's the case, uh, I've already given you everything else, so I'm, I'm good unless you have any questions.
Hey, with that uh, with that ribbon cutting, is there any way that we can shift it one way or the other? I know, and, and I hate to ask things to conform to my schedule, but uh, so I, I get in Friday, and I have a wedding on Saturday as well, Saturday evening at eleven o'clock is when I have to run in and get a haircut and deal with this mop that I'm dealing with right now.
I think we've advertised it already, haven't we, have we?
If we've already advertised.
We haven't advertised it, okay, um, when would you, when would it be good for you?
If we could, if we could either maybe bump it up to ten or make it later, one way or the other, I just, I, I have to go and get that done, so I don't look like a with like Chewbacca at this wedding.
I'd rather go earlier with it, Mayor, because we go later, we're in the middle of, of superhero carnival.
How about ten, does ten sound, does ten work for you?
Ten works.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just update it.
Yeah, cool, thank you so much. All right, well, let's keep this going, uh, so Mayor Counselor reports and initiatives, um, I've talked to some of the council about this already, but um, you know, the, the factory farms that are potentially coming into the area, uh, that has been a, a hot-button topic for a lot of community members. Um, I spoke to the I spoke to the cog, I spoke to more community members than I can count. Uh, I spoke to some of our, our other neighboring electeds as well. And I have a draft letter that is sitting in your guys' packets. I don't think it's something that we need to vote on as a council, but I wanted to give the council the opportunity if people wanted to sign on to that letter as well. Give you guys a chance to do that. Uh, I believe we're sending that to our local electeds as well as the or, or, excuse me, our, our state representation and the governor's office. So if anybody wants to sign on to that as well, you have that opportunity. We don't even have to make it a, a public thing. Just want to put that out there. Like I said, I will be back Friday, so if anybody, or Friday the twenty-fourth, so if anybody wants to discuss it, we will have that opportunity as well. Anybody else have any reports or initiatives?
I'm happy to sign it. Just wanted to let you know that I I've, uh, I don't know if you've seen the farms up at, uh, near Donald Aurora up there, but it's, uh, the smell, the, you know, the water table, what kind of things happen when we get the heavy rains like you're saying here? So yeah, I'm happy to sign it.
Excellent, thank you.
It would, uh, it would be, uh, it would, I mean, obviously the mayor can send a letter on his thoughts, but it is a stronger letter. If the council is all of one mind
Yeah.
uh, on the subject, it, it's probably a better
Yeah.
a, a better phrase letter coming from the council.
I just don't want anyone to feel like they're strong-armed to be a part of it or anything like that if they, if they have some reservations.
My question is like the water issues are concerned with, with the water tables and what? But my other question is, as far as I know, there, there's nothing we can do from stopping them from coming. I mean, we can express our concerns about the water and our, on the effects on the community and things like that, but in, in the long run, I'm not aware of anything that, that can stop them from coming if they do everything that they're supposed to be doing.
And just, uh, just to put that into context for people that might be watching at home, yes, it's, it's outside of our jurisdiction. I think, I think the raised concern here is because they're an agricultural uh, industry. There's some exemptions on how they're governed and how they're permitted from the state. Whereas as you know, for us, we're highly regulated by DEQ with our water runoff, how it's, uh, disposed of, how it's treated, things like that. There's, there's less, there's less, um, oversight for large, uh, agricultural industries. And I think the intent by, and mayor, correct me if I'm wrong with my assessment here, but I believe the intent from, um, the letter from the cog and the motivation of asking other cities is really to make the state representatives understand that there's somewhat of a loophole that could or could not impact surrounding areas. And maybe it's time, I don't know if it's so much about stopping this particular entity, is that maybe it's time to look at regulating these industries for the health and welfare of the local residents.
My, my intent with, with this letter isn't to, to try and stop it in any way. And I think everybody knows I, I, in, in my own personal beliefs, I tend to be pretty libertarian. If, if people own land, you know, within reason, I feel like they should be able to do, kind of do what they want with it, but really it, it does have to do with some of the, the potential impacts to our community as well as addressing the loopholes that are, are there, those exemptions are there. And I, I think that there is kind of a, a, a lack of, of understanding on the part of our, our, our state legislature on how some of these things are interconnected and, and why those exemptions and those loopholes can potentially be damaging to small rural communities. So we can go ahead and move on from that. You know, if, if the council is all of the same mind, hey, great, that's wonderful. Um, like I said, I don't, I don't want anyone to feel like they're being strong-armed into, to signing on to this, this letter at all. I think maybe the, the appropriate way would be for, for Ron to kind of, you know, send out a a, a master copy and if people want to sign on to it, cool. And if not, that's cool as well.
Happy to sign off on it, mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead and move on to go to the order. Anybody got anything? So like I said, I'll be back, uh, the afternoon of the twenty-fourth. Uh, I plan to be present for the Saturday market and for the superhero carnival. Since we are getting back into that time of year with Saturday market, and like everybody knows that I'm hugely advocate of, of having at least one of us present at each Saturday market. So I don't know if we want to look at like doing a little signup sheet or anything, or just, just talking about it beforehand and ensuring at least one of us will be present just to you know, make our, our faces known and to, to answer community questions and that kind of thing. I know in, in, in the past, it's, it's kind of been a smaller group of us that were doing it, but uh, I do really feel that it's important that we, we all try to make ourselves present as much as possible. And then, uh, let's see what else. Oh, uh, I will be gone again for work. Looking like the end of August, but I won't be, be missing any meetings or anything like that. This next little rotation I'll be going on, uh, falls between meetings. So it's looking like August, probably twenty-fourth-ish until September third, just so the council is aware of that. Uh, let's see, we got no correspondence, so if there is nothing else, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. I have seven thirty-eight.